I have asked Walter Watson, former councilman, to come and open us up in prayer this morning. So if everybody would stand.
Just looking at the agenda, I see there may be some controversial issues on the agenda today. But you know, it's always good to ask God's presence when you start talking about things that are kind of controversial. I've been sitting with these guys, and I know they make the right decisions, they make decisions from their heart, and they invite God's presence in. With His presence in, we don't have anything to worry about, do we? We just make decisions, move on as a city. So let's just do that. Father, we thank you for opportunity to have professionals doing what they do, but even professionals need balance and guidance. We just pray simply today that your presence will be here, that the discussions will be made, that the citizens will come forth and give their opinions, and that this group of individuals that you have selected for us to serve will think about it and do things that's best for the citizens. We just love you and thank you for this opportunity to have leadership and governance. We just pray that your presence will always be in this chamber. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge. Titian, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome everybody here today. Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, the payment of bills?
We like motion, please.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We will get right on into our agenda. Number one on our agenda is, I believe we have some citizens here to discuss the city's animal control ordinance and a leash law. So I don't have those names here in front of me. So anybody that is here, please come to the microphone, state your name.
My name is John Elliott. I'm here to pass a note to you.
Sure. Here you go. This is the incident that happened to my wife about two weeks ago. She still recovers. You can pass it in if you want.
Thank you.
The, I'm here before you because my wife, as you can see, got injured a couple of weeks ago. I've been a resident here since 2003. I retired from the military in 2005. I've been with my family here. When I called the police to have them report the incident, the policeman came up to me and said, yep, this dog, he knew the dog before we even explained it, so it happened multiple times. And he said, well, there's really nothing we can do about it. Now, my question, I guess, or my concern is, I don't want a leash law, let me get that straight, but that's not something I'm asking for, because I don't think you can do it, and I don't think it's something that needs to be done. I've had animals since I was probably four or five years old. I've trained rottweilers, I've trained dobermans, I've got a German shepherd right now. My dog does not need any sort of control, it's voice command. I mean, there's people that call my wife the dog that they say she even walked around all the time with the German shepherd in the stroller. But there needs to be some culpability, I think, for people who have aggressive animals and don't restrain them properly, whether it be in a household setting, in a restraint setting, because I've had aggressive animals that I've had to maintain like that, and I've never had one of my animals bite an individual, because I do that culpability myself. I think it's incumbent upon the person that owns the animal, not just for the sake of the people, but also for the animal itself, because this animal, what, it got put down, right? Right? We had to actually go get that animal and put it down. So now, we have a dead dog that did nothing but what it was kind of trained to do or had not been trained not to do, right? And so, when you look at that, I think we ought to have some sort of culpability for the people that own those kind of animals. If they're going to have an aggressive animal, they need to take the steps to restrain that animal and take care of that animal. And if they don't, there needs to be some sort of recourse or penalty for that. If I'm driving a car, if I shoot a gun, I have criminal negligence, even if I did not intentionally mean to hurt someone, correct? So why would it not be the same for an animal? Because an animal can be the same. It can be a tool for destruction as well as for good. That's all I have to say.
Word to do, Pat.
It was over on, I think it was 900th Block Southeast.
Williams Avenue.
Over near, on the other side, there were all the tracks. And like I said, my wife's, we've been walking here since, well, I retired in 2005, and she's been, you know, we walk all the time down the alleys. It's not the first time we've had a dog. I mean, when my dog, son was about three, he's special meat, so he has to be in a stroller even now that he's older. He actually got knocked down by another dog that attacked, tried to attack my shepherd. And I told Stephanie, because she had a leash on the shepherd, the time I told her, just release the shepherd, the dog, the dog will run, or the dog will do what he's got to do, but you don't need to get mixed up in that mix, right? You don't want that. You know, and we've had several incidents, especially with packs, when you get two or three together, they're going to get more aggressive. And we've had, what, two people die in the last month and a half because of that, not here, but one in Marshall County in one section as well. And so I think there needs to be some sort of escalating culpability or responsibility for the individuals, and up to maybe the point where they can't have them in the city limits at all. If they cannot do the proper actions it takes to restrain that animal and/or be responsible for that animal, it hurts the animal, and it hurts the individuals, and the people. You know, I'm all about maximizing your individual liberties and freedoms, but when it starts to infringe upon someone else, then you've got to have some sort of balancing act that takes place.
Have you looked at our ordinance, sir?
I have not. I heard you did.
Vicious, vicious, the dog ordinance.
I have not, sir. I apologize for not being harsh on that.
Would you be willing to look at that and maybe make some suggestions?
Yes, sir, I would be more than willing to.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be more than willing to look at that.
So you really part? If you stay through the meetings, we'll, like, we, yeah.
Well, I have to go back to my son, so I can't really stay late, because I've got my father watching him, but I'll come get it from him. But just some sort of escalating culpability, I think, because I, like I said, I love my shepherd not being on a leash. I mean, the only time we have a leash is when she goes inside to do some shopping or stuff, and people, you know, it's how you train the animal. I've had them, and you even have to know about your animal, but if you actually have an animal, bring it into the family, make it part of the family, then you know enough of its demeanor, and it's the way it's going to act to know how to properly take care of that animal, and the people that it surrounds. Because I mean, I had a black German shepherd that we used to call Beast, and he, you knew that you had to, if someone came in the house, you had to introduce him to that dog. And then that dog knew that that person was going to be in the house, and that was funny. But the whole time that person was in the house, that dog was between me and that person or my wife and that person. And so he knew, but, and, but he was, again, he was restrained under command. You know, and I had another, a doberman that was not bad on people, but would attack and handle them, minute he'd see it. So again, you had to restrain it and do the proper considerations to make that happen. And in a pack, I mean, both these incidents that happened in the last, what, month and a half were packs, and that's, that's the worst-case scenario, because they're going to get more aggressive. They hunt that way, and an individual can't fight, one dog you can fight off, three or four is very hard to get off of you, even if you know what you're doing.
I have a copy of the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have a good day.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to discuss the animal control issue?
Hello. My name's Rachel Abrams. I'm actually here, I do understand Mr. Elliott's point, but I'm actually saying that I think we should have a leash law as well as culpability. Too many of these attacks have happened recently, a couple of people have lost their lives. A woman in section was my niece. She was doing nothing but getting a package out of her yard. Now, while that was in section, things need to be done here in Fort Payne. On May 16th, this council decided to add a death penalty coordinate, and that is comforting, but it is only after the fact that something has happened. We need to be proactive in regards to preventing people from getting injured. The city leader, excuse me, I'm so nervous.
We don't bat.
Well, I apologize, I've never done anything in regards to this before, sir. As Mr. Elliott had stated, his wife was bit earlier this year.
John Elliott.
John Elliott. On Friday, I had put my, I was going to take some laundry to dry, and before I could get back out to my car, there was a pit bull preventing me from getting my, to my car. It was just growling in my yard. I shouldn't have to be afraid to go out into my yard. I should not have this fear. And I do have a police report, if you would like a copy of it, if you would like to see it. On this, hang on, I apologize, I only have the one, I just picked it up today. On the 17th, the animal control was called back to my neighborhood because two dogs were fighting, one of them had climbed into, had gone onto a property of another neighbor, got a cat off the porch, and killed it. If you would like to view my cell phone, I have the video of the dog carrying him dead cat. Would you like to see it? I would be happy to play the video for you, it's just a few moments. But I do have.
Same dog? Is it the same dog?
The same owners. A different dog, but same owners. Animal control has been out there several times, but unfortunately, pain's been coming. People should not be afraid to walk out the door for fear of being attacked by an animal. There's been several incidents in regards to this. My little boy is four years old and is so scared to try to go outside, that he climbs up the back of the car and gets on guard if the dog comes near him. And they don't, they do nothing. They'll say, oh, come here, Kilo, come here. My dog, my little boy should not be afraid. I should not be afraid. An example of an ordinance that was passed about a leash law took place in 2009, N5. They have regulated it. I would like something like that to occur here. It not only decreases the risk of individuals, but those who own animals as well. Animals that are free-roaming are more likely to get parasites, they're more likely to get diseases, they're more likely to get injured, hurt, or killed by another animal or person. They're also more likely to get hit by a car and cause damage, not only to themselves, to the person in the car as well, or the people that perhaps are in the car. I have started, affected from, I put this online just Friday, the 15th. I have a list of individuals in regards, and also comments that were made in regards to petition requesting a leash law. I have, there's 18 pages with 369 names, 98 of which live in, claim they would say they live in the city of Fort Payne, they're highlighted in the pinkish color. In yellow are listing individuals in Jackson and DeKalb County neighboring cities. If you would like, you are welcome to keep this, I would be happy to pass this along Just this year, August 25th, the same dog that was reported on Sunday was also reported for the same thing, and it brought an animal into my yard in front of my little boys. October 11th, these same dog owners had a different dog kill their own puppy right in front of their children. I'm just so grateful my little boys didn't actually see what it was they were doing, because it was rather violent and aggressive. I thank you for your time, I ask that a leash law does get passed. Something needs to be done to prevent someone from getting hurt. The individuals that are in neighboring areas, they might still be here if had something going on. Why not prevent an accident from happening? Thank you.
Before you leave, where do you live?
I live here in Fort Payne now.
What area?
Near Beeson Gap. It's fine. If you have any question, oh, we have been answering any other questions if anyone could have it.
Appreciate you taking the time and coming this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to see the video? I'll be happy to show it, of the dog that attacked the cat.
It's not necessarily.
Not necessarily, we believe.
I believe you.
Okay, well, I didn't know, so I just thought I'd have it, have it to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a copy of Fife's ordinance, and we will look at these things and try to be proactive.
Mr. President, what could somebody do now? What's the recourse now for everybody in the room? If something happens with existing ordinance that we have, what's the recourse? What could be done to prevent this from happening? Do we have anything?
Yeah, they can actually, actually call the police.
Well, they call the police, and I think you're on the council when they pass this. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't, I'm not going to, don't bind me that I'm exactly right, but there's a process where it's declared to be either malicious or vicious dog. The owner is subject to, if he doesn't control that malicious or vicious dog, they're subject to a complaint being filed in the city court, they're subject to a fine of between zero and $500, and jail time up to six months. And ultimately, if they fail to control that dog and the dog isn't that vicious, then the dog can be put to death. That's, that's a very brief outline of four or five-page ordinance, but that's what it goes through, basically.
Well, if you remember, whenever we passed that vicious nuisance dog ordinance, you know, the police department has to get involved first, and then animal control.
2011's, when that was last passed, and now I'm in the 17.
Can we add something to it? Say we got a call, and we say, it is a dog, it is vicious, it is roaming, can, can something be done then to the dog rather than it?
Yes, the dog can be immediately picked up under the ordinance we have now. And that's Mr. Elliott's case, his wife was bitten over on Williams Avenue. Police report was done, the officer identified the dog that day, animal control picked it up, the owner surrendered it, and it's been euthanized. So that dog is, is gone now. That problem's taken care of. Our biggest concern, I think, initially was that you have repeat offenders, and there should be an escalation. So there is an actual escalation. If you have a dog that bothers you to the point that you want to call the police and do a report, that dog can be basically declared a nuisance. Constant guarding, barking, growling at your kids, attacking your other pet, anything that constitutes a nuisance under this ordinance, that dog can be the $70 report, that report is inforarded to animal control, and if the situation warrants, it can be picked up and impounded for such time as the court can dispose of how the dog needs to be disposed of, literally to the point of having to put slip. So we've got things in place. The only thing Fort Payne doesn't have that Fife has is that Fife is supposed to be a lease law, they call it a containment law, and you have no dogs running at large, period. That's the only thing really that differs between ours and theirs. We have a nuisance law, they have a containment law. We allow dogs to run at large, but if they constitute a nuisance of any kind, a report can be made, and then steps can be taken. So I think our decision going to be eventually, do we want to go to that last step of saying there are no running at large dogs, and even Mr. Elliott says he's not for that, and his wife got bit. So you've got different opinions on that. But when you've got 57 square miles and over 15,000 people, and you've got rural, and we can't have a leash law in downtown, and we have one there where it's all or none. So that's the decision we've got to make as a group, if we want to expand on what we've got, or let it run its course. If people will make those reports, and that has picked up, we went from four last year to 13 this year. So people are reporting these animal issues, and if they will report them, we hopefully won't have repeat situations.
Well, and hopefully they won't be told there's nothing we can do. They need to explain the process to that person when they call, so that they understand what steps they can legally take.
I think there needs to be a little training on customer service there, that we're here to help you, and we'll do all we can to help you, and that would go a long ways, yeah.
Brian?
The root of the problem is people that own pets don't take care of them. They need to have a neuter and spay. And you know, I've had all kinds of pets, I've had 28 squirrels that I've raised, I've got a pet, I had a pet raccoon, now I've got a brand new German shepherd. But the people I see on these back streets, they tie their dog to a dead gum tree and leave it out in the rain, and they don't deserve to have animals there.
Right.
And then they have them spayed and neutered. That way you wouldn't have pets. When they get pets, they, they go wild animals, you know, and all the way to solve that problem is shooting. And I don't, I don't shoot many things, but I just believe people need to spay and neuter their dogs, if they want a dog, they need to appreciate it and make sure he's not something that's stolen away in the yard.
I think this is something that we're going to have to look at very carefully in the next couple of months anyway, and get some more input.
I think the loss of any life, one, is too many, whether it's in our city, or whether it's in our county, or whether it's in a neighboring city or county.
We have a proactive ordinance, however, it really doesn't take into, into effect until something does happen. Now, it's proactive from that point on, in that we try to eliminate that from happening again, but we need to eliminate it from happening the first time if there's any way possible.
May I add? There's people mentioning about how the animals are raised, but there are also many cases where you will find that a lot of the animals are turning on their own, they are turning on the people that raise them. Just this past weekend, a woman in Virginia, I know it's demerited, she was attacked, and not only was she attacked, her dog started to consume her. So I'm sorry. There's more than just how they were raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? I was going to say, sorry, I'm usually the comment.
But I was, because I covered the issue of Pastor Gary Hankman getting attacked in Rainsville last year, and I thought in the wake of that, y'all did do, like Rocky said, it was, what'd you say, minimum $500, five, six months in jail and everything. Actually, I looked up the story too, and you and Brian are wearing the same shirts you wore that day, so.
We've only got, we've only got two shirts, and we travel all the way to the [inaudible].
I was going to say, one thing that hadn't been mentioned is, on the state level, as far as unincorporated parts of Alabama, like, was that, did that happen, was that within the city limits of section?
It was on County Road 121.
I knew it was in Jackson County, but I didn't know if it was actually, if it was in the city limits of section. Yes, ma'am, I understand, I'm just saying that the laws that apply there also haven't been strengthened at all. Fort Payne and Rainsville and stuff, they have, and I mean, they can always be approved upon and everything, but the law at the state level actually right now, we allow for a $2 to $50 fine right now, and that's kind of what applied there too. So I'm just saying that it also needs to be done at the state level as well, and it's not on the legislative agenda this year. And so I think now's a good opportunity to try to get, I mean, you know, no law will ever be perfect to be able to prevent everything, but at the same time, I mean, you know, it's not really being handled down there, I don't think. And so, you know, if there's holes in their law here too, it definitely needs to be strengthened, but I'm saying too, like, you know, there's a lot, I mean, what happened to your niece, I mean, it could, I mean, it's terrible, but at least it could prevent the situation in other parts of the state as well, at least, so.
Yes, starting here, because this is local, it is going to be going to a further level.
Okay.
We're doing more research to get, to take that stuff.
Because I really don't think either at the county level, I mean, like, I don't think we have a county animals control right now, do we? I mean, at least in the county.
We've got a county officer, but, and I think we're, from what I understood this morning, we got some, our latest numbers, I think we had over 400 dogs put down at the pound in the last year. And the great majority of that is just because of irresponsible ownership and people that don't take care of their animals. And I feel we need to hold the owners to a higher standard, and that's what we've tried to do here with what we did. And there may be something we need to put in there where you prohibit ownership of animals if you have repeat offenders, and it's not just, you know, we got people that are neglecting their animals, we need to be addressing that also, because neglecting animals turn into vicious animals, a lot of times. So I think we've, we've got some things we need to address, I don't disagree with that at all. But I think we've been proactive in trying to prevent things like having out there, and if people will follow the rule that we have in place now, and if the officers will follow up on that and try to convey that, yes, this is the first step in a process, and maybe we need to have some cards printed up of what that process is, and here's step one, you've just done a report, step two will be the animal control guy, he'll follow up and publish that. I think we've got steps in place, a lot of people just didn't realize what we have in place. So I'll be for trying to publicize what we got, and then maybe seek some public input and move on.
Did you say that was a bill that was going to be introduced to the state?
As far as I know, I looked at the agenda, unless they just had.
They're not.
But nails the right time to probably be given, so, just for the timing and everything. But that was just my two cents, I was just saying, I mean, because, like I said, at least here, they do have up to six months, and with the state level, it's just $2 to $50 fine, and I mean, really, it's, I mean, a $2, I mean, who's going to get a $2 fine?
It costs more than that, you'd lay beast.
And, and well, so, just real, just other, like, if you're trying to prosecute or something, a vicious dog owner, and it's in the county, I mean, it takes like a high burden of proof and stuff, too, from what I understand, I may be wrong on that, as far as I've been looking into it, just from the way it is, like, there's, but all right, that was my two cents, just from seeing a lot of it, and it just seems like it's, you know, this, we were talking about this last year, a little over a year ago, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? Okay. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2017-46, addressing the proposed local act relating to Sunday sales of alcohol.
When we presented, when we presented, let me try it one more time, when we presented this act to our legislative delegation, they suggested some changes based on what they had seen everywhere else and the passage everywhere else, which basically puts the ultimate action in the hands of the city council. Well, the ultimate action's always in the hands of the city council. So that's, that's the change that they recommended to us, and because it's their recommendation, they've got to pass it, we brought it back to the council, and that's our recommendation.
Well, I'm going to make a statement on this. I still agree that we need to put this to the vote of the people, and I'm not in favor of taking that out of that act, to not be able to let the people vote on it.
Well, I would agree with Brian. The question was asked, whenever we was having a forum during the last election, whether or not I would support the sale of Sunday alcohol sales, and I made a statement at that time that I would not, but if it was left up to the vote of the people, and the people approved it, then I, you know, I could live with that. So I feel the same way Brian does, I still feel like it needs to be left up to the vote of the people.
And my reason for that, when, when the wet-dry issue came up, it was voted on by the people with that ordinance in place, that there would be no Sunday alcohol sales, and in order to change that, I felt that we should put it back out to the vote to the people to be able to change that.
I guess I'll jump in here. Johnny's reading it, so he's going to comment later. I don't disagree with what Brian and Reddick said, but I've been overwhelmed with people telling me I got elected to vote on things that are difficult. This is a difficult thing. One other member of this council and myself have more than one reason to not support the sale of alcohol anywhere, but we put the good of the city above our personal conflicts and history. I don't even drink. I have no problem with people that do, if they do it responsibly. I've dealt with people for years that drink and don't drink and do drugs and don't do drugs, and this is not, to me, a religious issue, I think this is a personal issue that you have to make a decision of what's best for the community. And we've got a decision here, we either let the thing stay in place like it is, which is a referendum, or we can vote for it, or we go with what the recommendation or legislative delegation is, which is, I think this is the sixth or seventh time that they have put one of these up in this form for council to vote on it. So I don't have a problem with it. If, if we need to go with the recommendations of our delegation, I'm willing to put this to a council vote. And like I say, I don't disagree with either one of you, I respect your position and your vote, however that goes, but I feel like now's the time for us to decide what we're going to decide.
Y'all remember what I said during the forum? I think it's something that we've got to look at sometime. I don't have a problem with bugging on it, because I think that, you know, sometimes you got to make the decision, if that's what the delegation says, and that's where they got it in other town, I don't have a problem with it. I think if we're ever going to continue to grow and attract tourism, there might be better restaurants and that type of thing, we're going to have to have it. I don't, just don't what y'all believe in, same thing. I, I just think it's, it's something, something's going to have to buy us, if we're ever going to get the better restaurants, and we've got a chance to get a pretty good deal out of Canyon Center, so, with that said.
Well, let me, let me say this, I don't have a vote, I really don't care one way or another what the results are, but I think one thing that the public needs to realize, when you're probably all are voting on this, and there are certain things you can't talk about until they get to a certain point, and so it can't be very specific, but there are some really big economic possibilities right now. If this thing is delayed long enough to have a vote, they're going to go away, and it has been made very clear that unless Fort Payne does ultimately approve Sunday sales, they're not going to happen, and that would be a major boost for employment, revenues, and the economy of Fort Payne, so that's the background that this council is making this very difficult decision with.
But also, in that same sense, there's no guarantee that they will be here if we have alcohol sales.
That's true.
Nothing's guaranteed, that's the only guarantee.
Right.
Well, but it gives us a bargaining tool and gives us a chance to grow our community and add a better lifestyle, I think, for our children, it creates more tax, taxes, and this is clean tax money that comes in from outside of Fort Payne, it's the tourists and the visitors coming in, and we've actually been told that we don't get conferences and we don't get those types of things, because people want to come in for a conference on a Sunday and have a reception and be able to serve alcohol, just because that's what they're accustomed to, and I'm not saying that that's a reason to do this, I don't personally think that there's any reason in putting our city and our community through the process of voting on this and dividing our community, spending lots of money, when it is our job to make those difficult decisions. And I am along the lines of Johnny and Wade, I think it's our responsibility as council people to make that decision, even though it is hard, I, you know, I would, I grew up in a family that had issues with alcohol, and it affected my raising, but it was because of the person, not the fact that there was alcohol. And so, I, I just think it's the right thing to do, and that's what I was elected to do.
Let me make a couple of comments. The first thing that you looked at, or I looked at, was what kind of economic effect is it going to be to the city as far as alcohol tax itself? And it's not that much, and we went back down to Geston and looked at Applebee's in Geston compared to up here, and they originally had a, didn't have Sunday sales there when they opened that store in Geston, and they gave me some figures. Their figures was food sales. That's where it really increased, it wasn't so much on alcohol, it was food sales. And most of the restaurants around here that have approached me and his county, this year's a little bit different situation, New Year's is on, New Year's Eve is on Sunday, and that's one of their biggest draws of the year, as far as people coming and having parties and watching the ball drop and all this kind of stuff, which means some alcohol sales, but a lot more food sales. And I hadn't talked too much about that, and they talk about the football season, the basketball season, that they draw a bigger crowd if they do have their bar open, and I can see their standpoint, so they're all requesting that we do that. The things that we've talked about around the Canyon Center and other hotels and things that we've been talking to from times past, it always comes up, it always comes up, so it's, it's not an easy decision. As far as somebody wants to just go out and buy alcohol, they can do it during the week. The deal with the hotels and the restaurants is a little bit different situation.
And I think that's what people don't understand, maybe, is that it's not the alcohol itself, it is the increase and the chance to get better restaurants and hotels and those types of things here, and it's controlled growth, you know? It's not like we're going to grow and, you know, go crazy and not have a plan, because that's what we're working on now, is we, we want to do our due diligence and make sure that these things happen in the best way possible. I think the past councils did a great job at how they regulated our alcohol. I'm really proud of that, if you look at it, because if you, if you come here, you don't realize that there's any place that sells alcohol, really, because of the regulations they had, and I, I think it's kept our city, you know, the quaint city that it is, I just think that we need to share the experience of Fort Payne with as many people as we can, and be able to sustain, and, because I want Fort Payne to be here long after me, and those are the type of things I look at, is I want sustainable growth, and I think to have sustainable growth, we're going to have to have alcohol on Sundays.
Let me say one other thing, and Rocky's already mentioned it, I just want to reiterate. Our legislative delegation came back with us and said, this is what they recommend. They recommend that the city council make that decision, because that's what they've had in all the other bills that's been proceeding to, to the legislature. Whatever is done today, it's still going to be voted on by the legislature.
Right.
It's not, I mean, it's just not, until they give the okay, we don't do anything.
But you need a motion now, right? I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Aye. Okay, motion carried by three votes. So, we will proceed. And I've just, as I stated before, during campaign time, I did make that statement that I felt like that it should be a vote of the people, I have not changed my mind on that issue, I still feel like it should be a vote of the people, and just would like for that to go on record, that I, you know, would prefer it to be a vote of the people, so.
I think we understand, and I respect you for that.
I respect y'all for y'all's, for y'all's view as well.
And I agree, and I also made that statement during the forum, and I still stand by it, so.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 2017-47, this is rescinding, repealing, and replacing Resolution 2017-39 relating to holiday pay.
As y'all know, we've had an issue with holiday pay since we.
Since we've been in office.
This has cleaned up a lot. 2017-30, make it more clear how holiday time was processed in regards to calculating payroll, and this resolution is in here that amended Section 3 of 2710-30. Basically, it says if you work a holiday, you get time and a half for it.
And you still get your eight hours holiday pay. Because it contradicted itself with the policy, personnel policy, that states you get 80 holiday hours in a year, and that, that resolution that we did contradicted that fact in the personnel policy, so we just wanted to fix that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
This has been one of the most confusing things.
Yes, it has been confusing, and we want our city employees to be paid for exactly what they're working, and when they come in and work on a holiday, they should be paid for it.
I agree.
If they've got overtime during that week, we want them to be paid that overtime as well, so.
One of the first things we did to fix that, that was the counting holiday against you on overtime, we eliminated that, so anybody that takes a holiday off on Monday, has come in Thursday and worked overtime, gets overtime now where they didn't before, they had to build eight hours back, so that's still fixed like it was, so we've tried to help the employees as much as possible, but it kind of got to where it was contradicting itself, so this should clean that up, if you work a holiday, you get time and a half for it, and the eight hours that everybody else gets, so.
Right.
That should hopefully fix that for the.
Thank you guys for working hard on clarifying that.
I appreciate Brian taking that and working horns and doing some research on it and taking it to some of the departments that had issues with it, because it's been a contentious deal. We're not taking anything away from anybody, we're just trying to clarify it where everybody benefits the same way.
We have different departments that work different shifts, and so it's difficult to come up with one thing that applies to everyone, so.
And I would ask you, department heads, to, to make sure that your department knows these things, pass that word along to them, let them know that we're not here trying to take anything away from them, we want them to be, you know, exactly getting paid what they're supposed to be getting paid, we want it to be like it's supposed to be, because we appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. Okay, Resolution 2017-48, resolution in support of regulating daycare facilities as proposed and supported by the Alabama League of Municipalities.
Leaks sent out a notice here a few days ago, they have a legislative package they introduce every year to the legislation, and this was one of their priorities. As you may know, there's been several trades against us in our state the last year or so with neglect and even, I think, some deaths at daycare facilities, and a lot of these facilities are unlicensed and unregulated, and this, this bill that they're going to introduce, or ask to be introduced, I should say, simply requires that daycares, regardless of their structure, individually owned, corporate owned, church owned, whatever, be licensed and regulated.
This is just a resolution where we're expressing support for that legislation, we're not passing any city license or anything like that. I'd like most of you to adopt that resolution.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
You know, it's been brought to my attention that you can go anywhere to a hairdresser, a hairdresser has to be licensed, but you can put your kid in a daycare center that nobody's got a license for, and nobody.
We need to take care of our children.
Okay. Next, continuing business, we have board appointments. Applications were accepted through Friday, December the 15th, for two positions on the Fort Payne Improvement Authority Board. This is John T. Davis and Kenneth Larson's terms, who expire on the 31st of December. They both have served one year, one, one term, which is a three, three-year period. The applicants were John T. Davis, Dale Fisher, Kathy Ledhill, Kenneth Larson, and Robert Bob Thomas.
Well, let me just say, that's the shortest-serving board we have in the city of Fort Payne, and those two guys have only served one term, and I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Kenneth Larson.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Kenneth Larson? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
I likewise would make the motion, we reappoint John T. Davis.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for John T. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
We're looking at extending those terms, terms, right?
Yes, we're working on a.
It has to go through the legislation.
It has to go through the legislation, but yes, we're, we're talking to Mr. Busman, who's the FBI attorney, about requesting some local legislation, which changes several things about it, but that's the main thing.
I would like to say that I think they've both done an excellent job, and glad to reappoint both of them to that board, so. Okay, new business, Mayor, you got a proclamation to make.
I believe we've got some high school students that could come up front, please. Might as well all of you now.
Coaches.
I believe we have coaches as well, so they need to come on up too.
Yeah, this coach is going to stand in the background.
Come on up here.
I'll up, come on up.
These girls have had a very successful season this past time, and we want to acknowledge them. They'll get your pictures too.
Y'all, council's going to stand up?
Yeah.
Rocky, Andy, you don't want to stand? All right, ready? One, two, three.
All right, girl. Whereas the city of Fort Payne desires to honor and recognize the Fort Payne High School Girls Cross Country Team, and whereas the team did compete in various meets across the state, and whereas they finished first in Class 6A in the state of Alabama, and whereas they have presented themselves as great ambassadors of the city of Fort Payne. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Fort Payne in the state of Alabama do hereby proclaim that the city of Fort Payne recognizes and honors the Fort Payne Lady Wildcats as Class 6A state cross-country champions for the year 2017, and encourages each member to continue to strive for excellence in their chosen endeavors, going this 19th day of December 2017, City of Fort Payne, Alabama, signed by the mayor and each city council.
We're in the process also of having that put on the welcome signs coming into town.
Greg, can I say, I'd like to thank the rec center, they are a big help. We don't have the facilities of the teams that we kind of compete against, in Birmingham, they've got all those schools that we compete against, they have indoor facilities, and Greg and the people at the rec center are all gracious enough, when it rains or when it's very cold outside, we're able to use the gym around 2:00 every day, or we have some distance runners that'll go up and use the indoor track, and for that, I am very thankful, so, thank you, very much.
Glad to have you all.
I'd just like to say from the council, we congratulate you all, keep up the good work. A big thank you to the coaches, because why would that wouldn't happen without the coaches, so. Okay, moving right along, SRF application, James Payton to request authorizing the mayor to sign a pre-application to apply for SRF money. So, James, go ahead.
Okay. This request, if you grant to the mayor, if you sign a pre-application, it's due at the end of December, to go to ADM for $8.347 million, that would go to fund a gravity sewer line from David Mansker up to 49th Street, pump station, and also some upgrades at the brick plant. This is a, SRF loan that's administered by ADM, it's term is 20 years, the rate varies, it's somewhere around 2%, one third quarters, maybe a little bit too. Currently, the city has a loan through the SRF program from a couple of years ago, you were able to get some, once you forget us, we didn't have to pay back loan, so there is that potential, but there's no guarantee, but what should be applied for is a loan of $8.347 million for 20 years, for a rate of somewhere in negative 2% at plus minus.
James, is there any, you know, when we applied for the SRF money to the sewer plant, they had the principal forgiveness, we did the light project, I think?
That's right.
Which enabled the principal forgiveness, is there any such provision in this, other than just maybe?
Right, there's, that energy. Right, that energy efficiency provision has expired, that ran out, I think, last year, year four, but they still do have a provision for principal forgiveness, it's just not tied to energy efficiency.
Is it required, anything required?
No, it's just kinda applied across, it depends on who applies, and I mean, just kinda looking what type of cases come in, and look at what ability they have to forgive it, but there's nothing that we would have to do special to get the consideration.
This is basically part of low interest money that comes from the federal rail up down to the state, and they disperse it out. The benefit to this project going this route is we apply for it, if we get it, we're getting 2% or less interest rate, it's 20 years instead of 30, but we don't have the closing costs associated with bond money, so this could potentially save us the difference between making payments for 10 years on a 30-year bond or 20-year SRF, plus we get the ability to have principal forgiveness, we should know, hopefully this summer, once they dish all this money out, whatever's left, they go back and give the grantees X amount of money, so we do have the potential for having principal forgiveness, but we don't know, it may or it may not, but even if we don't, it's still significantly less than 3.9% on a bond issued and closing costs, so I'd recommend that we go ahead and authorize the mayor's receipt of this application.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, number six, discussion of firearms concerning firing range on Lookout Mountain, which there have been complaints by the police, from the police, or to the police department and city hall. Mayor, do you wanna address that?
This is, I guess the complainant is Russell Olddale, and he has complained on several different occasions over the years about a group going into the woods across from his house and starting a war, so to speak, but I don't think he's actually ever observed it, but he hears it, and he's asked us to do something about it. I know Randy had been involved with it before, and you probably have too, would you like to kinda address that?
We're taking plenty of muscle, we talk to folks out there, try to get them together, I don't think that's possible.
It was about a year ago, I think, that y'all kinda did get things settled for a little while, but it started back. It's...
Is it hunter run here?
No, it's two separate owners have own property out there, and they just enjoy complaining.
And it's my understanding that that's against the ordinance that we have in place, is that right?
It is. You got a situation where, to my knowledge, none of the policemen have actually observed it, and I don't know for certain that Russell has actually observed it, and if you're gonna make a complaint, or you're gonna sign a warrant, you need to know what you're talking about.
Well, and all you have is allegations.
Yes.
Well, you can get a warrant based on allegations, but in order to prove the case, you've got to have somebody that says, because you charge the individual, you don't charge the landlord, you charge whoever's under the ordinance, you charge whoever's firing the gun, well, somebody's gotta be willing to come to court and say, I saw the mayor fire a gun, and that's who we're charging with, and if you can't do that, you can't prove your case.
Is there anyone else that's complained? Is there any complaints from anyone else other than Russell?
There's only one other cop.
I believe our ordinance, the fire, discharge of the firearms, the city limits, you can't do it within what, 900?
900 feet, so that's a shotgun only, unless you're at an approved firing range, approved being approved layoff.
You gotta be over 900 feet from a rifle, which is...
That makes a pretty rule. I haven't measured, but I have been over two where they actually shoot.
And they're not shooting shotgun.
And it's only a shotgun, man.
And if, I want it shot.
We actually have people deer hunting in the city limits that are basically violating our city ordinance as far as discharge of weapons, but they're hunting on property that they have permission to hunt on, or their own property, so I think it comes to the point of where somebody's complaining about it, if you don't get a complaint, it doesn't exist, and it's not written down, it didn't happen, so somebody's gotta be able to write down, I saw Joe Blow shoot a gun at X, and I don't like that happening, so I'm willing to make a formal complaint, until we get that, there's really nothing else we can do that I know of, am I wrong? So I would say if they continue to have complaints and can sign a complaint, then that's the way we're gonna be able to enforce it.
And what we can deal with?
Right, and then it goes through the court system.
Property owners can...
And that's the next thing, if somebody gets to the point where they wanna keep shooting on their property, they can go to the police chief and he can designate it as an approved firing range, and they can shoot all they want there within safety reasons, so.
That's how the forty claims operation was approved back in 2007.
Right, and it was like 300 feet from some apartments, but it was shotgun, shooting away from it, but it's not working anymore.
Well, the city council can authorize that, the chief can authorize turkey shoots and this sort of thing, but not necessarily firing ranges, the council would have to approve firing range.
Other than that exception, the Fisher annual fundraiser out there would be illegal, but it's permitted under special circumstance, so there are ways to do this properly, but apparently this is just random shooting on your property.
Well, it's just an inherent problem of having a city whose city limits take in a lot of area which is clearly rural farmland, where people quail hunt, deer hunt, rabbit hunt, and everything else.
Well, I guess we'll just go back to Russell and say, Russell, if you wanna sign a complaint saying you've seen this actually happen and what have you, we're willing to do it, otherwise, if you can get ahold of police and get them out there while this is going on, and that doesn't usually happen, it's always after the fact that we hear about it, so I'll call Russell, tell him, I told him I'd bring it before the council because it would be...
Well, all the council can do is pass an ordinance, and the ordinance is passed, so all you can do now is file a complaint, if you can prove your case, find it, if you can't, you can't.
Okay, okay, I've got one more thing before turning it over to the mayor, we visited over at the Child Development Center, and do we need to take any action on the proceeding on getting a heater?
I believe since it's gonna involve paying for something that's not a regularly budgeted item, we need to authorize that expense, and I think we all agree that it needs to be fixed over there, we got two quotes for heating and cooling, the only difference we had is one was a three, one was a four ton, so I would think that we would get the clerk to go back to these two people who quoted, who don't know what each other's price is, and say, we need both of you to do a three and both of you to do a four, and whichever one of those is best suited for the building, we authorize today the purchase of that equipment with a proper vendor.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and proceed with repairing, whatever we have to do that we...
You need to do that.
Get approved, spend gear.
Second.
So we have a motion?
Exactly how much you do.
And a second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that is the city building, so we're just about to maintain a city building, and the money's in the general building account to pay for that.
Yes.
So we wouldn't have to move any money.
Okay, Mayor, you have anything else?
Don't have anything, it couldn't wait till next time.
Okay, and do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Go ahead.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Again, I would like to thank everybody for coming out to our meeting, hope you will enjoy the holidays coming up, and keep it hard, and remember the real reason for the season. Merry Christmas to you.